At this time, I'd like to call into session the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, May 16th, 2018. The first item we have on our agenda is election of officers, but before we do that, I'd like to welcome our newest member Kathleen Holland, who will be the Northborough, one of the five representatives from Northborough on the Regional School Committee. Congratulations. We'll look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Per our policy that we have on the election of officers, it's rotated between the towns of Northborough and Southborough. This year, it is the Northborough turn to chair, the North, the chairperson, vice-chair, and secretary. And I have the honor of doing just the beginning of the election of officers as being the most senior member of both towns. And so at this time, and anyone can make a nomination, and anyone, all members will be voting on this slate of officers. So at this time, do I have a nomination for chairperson of a Northborough member for the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee? Jack?
Madam interim chair. I would like to nominate Lynn Winter for our chair.
And second by Paul. Lynn, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of the nomination of Lynn Winter as the chairperson for the Northborough Regional School Committee? And it passes unanimous. Congratulations, Lynn.
Okay. So I take up the remaining, election of the remaining officers. So we're looking for nominations for the office of vice-chair.
Madam Chair, I nominate Joan Frank for the office of vice-chair.
Motion by Tom King, seconded by Paul Bucka. Okay, any other nominations? See none. So we shall vote for vice-chair, Joan Frank. All those in favor? Unanimous? That's unanimous. And the final office is the secretary. Nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jack Kane as secretary for the region.
Second.
Nominated by Joan Frank, seconded by Paul Bucka. Any other nominations? No nominations? All those in favor? Okay, so we have our slate of officers. The next item on the agenda is our public hearing on school choice. Every year, at this time, we typically take up this, and have this public hearing. A district, school districts must, the school committees must vote to not participate in in school choice. Otherwise, if there's no vote taken, it defaults to that you would be a district of choice. So right now, it's a public hearing, and later on, we will have discussion and vote on it. So, yes?
It's tradition that I go through this language a little bit, so I think we've gone through half of it, but I'll just highlight it again, just for audience sharing. As Madam Chair Winter mentioned, it is typical in the month of May that we consider school choice as an option, and it typically begins with a public hearing. The chairperson will welcome any discussion on this topic, and we'll close the public hearing. A vote will be taken during the regular meeting agenda. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, requires that each year, school committees consider whether their district should be in the school choice program during the upcoming school year. If they choose not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, they must take a vote prior to June 1, and this vote is required to be reported by that date, which is just around the corner. If we do not vote by June 1st, 2018, we automatically become a school choice district. The vote is recorded and forwarded to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Historically, Northborough-Southborough Regional School District has not been a participant in school choice, and it is my recommendation to the Northborough School Committee once again this year, that we do not choose to participate in the FY 2019 school year. My recommendation is based on the following. The current fluctuations of class enrollments during the school year, each and every fall, we have an outstanding report from the building administration as to enrollments in our classes, and each and every year, we have a conversation about access for all students who are currently enrolled in certain electives and definitely our advanced placement classes. And those numbers oftentimes are higher than we would like to see, and this, in fact, would have an impact, I think, on those enrollment numbers. Also, the impact on enrollments in successive years. Students who are enrolled at any grade level are entitled to remain in the district until graduation. Both K-8 Southborough and K-8 Northborough have elected not to participate in school choice, so of the, of the region, we would be the, the only school. The $5,000 reimbursement per child, which we would receive, is significantly lower than our per pupil expenditure of approximately $16,000. And many neighboring districts, in fact, are not identified as school choice districts and have chosen not to participate in the program. And I do know we'll be taking a vote for consideration later.
Okay. And so I don't see any comments by the public, so I will call, close this public hearing on school choice. The next item we have on the agenda is the action on the minutes of the open meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the, the open meeting of April 25th, 2018.
Second.
Moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Joan Frank. Any, any changes or discussion on this? See none? All those in favor? Oppose? And abstaining? Two abstentions. Abstaining? I assume. Looking at the table. Okay. All right. The next is the action on the minutes of the audit subcommittee meeting of May 8th, 2018. Paul?
So again, I would move that we accept, approve the audit subcommittee minutes as published from the Tuesday, May 8th meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joan Frank. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? One abstention? Okay. And, okay, so next on the agenda is the educational policy. We have the approval of the Best Buddies Student Leaders and Advisors Overnight Trip to the International Leadership Conference in Indiana University, in Bloomington, Indiana, on July 20th through the 23rd, 2018. Paul?
So moving right along, I move that we approve the student travel request for the Best Buddies trip as admitted.
Moved by Paul. Do I have a second? Seconded by John Kane. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimously approved. Okay. The next is new business. So we have the Science Department presentation.
This rounds out, I think, the last presentation of this school year. It's always exciting to have our departments present.
It's my last round.
No, not at all. You have many, many more presentations.
I don't know about that, but I do have a few more.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to go to the other side.
Good evening Superintendent Johnson, Mr. Martineau, members of the school committee, and Dr. Walsh. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm thrilled to be able to be present with future budding scientist and a teacher in our department, Mr. Welty, to share some of the highlights that's been going on throughout the year. Before I give this stage to the students, which are probably much more exciting than myself, I have to first recognize my very passionate teachers. These students wouldn't be where they're at today if it weren't for the endless hours, the dedication that my teachers bring to the classroom every day. They inspire these, these kids to go on, they make science come alive. As I've said before in my presentations, I'm like the proud mother. I couldn't ask to work with a better group of teachers. So I first thank you and the rest of the, the group. As kids come in in the fall, they start in their biology, in their freshman year in biology, the first task that we have in the department is to get the kids to be, to pass the Biology MCAS. Our kids are very successful. That's done with a lot of hard work from the biology teachers to ensure that the curriculum matches what the test is going to be. They do a lot of extra work on the outside, preparing the kids, starting in May. They have extra help sessions after school. So our kids are successful, and we're very proud of that. Beyond that, they certainly go on, they take the chem, the physics, but our proudest moments are the electives that we offer. We offer six, on an average of six sections of AP courses. That was between the year 2010 and 18. So based on what our needs are, so that would be AP Bio, Chem, Physics, and Environmental. Some have two sections, some have one, depending on what the enrollment is. What's really flourished is our forensic science course. Back in 2014, 15, we had four sections under the teacher of Susan Vaughn. She has inspired those kids, and now we're up to eight sections. So our electives, you know, change in numbers based on the student desire. So you can see, we have many different electives. I think one of the ones that's always interesting is the organic chemistry. Many schools don't have organic chemistry, so we've been fortunate enough to offer that. Also, the Science Innovations is another class that's not offered in many schools, and that's under the direction of Mr. Welty. So our kids have opportunities, and if they have desires and they come to a teacher, we're certainly willing to bring it to the table. Beyond the classroom, at the two o'clock bell, it doesn't end for our teachers. Many of my teachers are involved in extracurricular activities, coaching, advising, chaperoning, participating on committees. So this is just a little chart of what my teachers do. Every single teacher in the department is involved in at least one, two, maybe even three of those activities up there. So they're constantly making the connection. On May 21st, we'll have our Eighth Annual Science Career Day, where we host several parents that come in and share their career paths in the fields of science. So they'll be speaking to our physics students this year. It's very difficult to bring the excitement of our labs to you, so would really like to have you upstairs in the labs, but that just doesn't work. So we've thrown in a few pictures of students in the biology class modeling protein synthesis and natural selection. Constantly hands-on chemistry students. Here, she's making a hot air balloon, launched the hot air balloon to show our gas laws. Over here, back around the holiday time, they were doing a redox reaction, making holiday ornaments that also included stoichiometry. And then back in October, the Wicked Witches of D-200 put on many, many chemical reactions that we actually make connections to throughout the year. So that's kind of the starting to get the kids a little bit excited about chemistry. The environmental science, both at the AP and the elective courses, are exploring timely topics. That's Miss Mott in the frog outfit in the Islamic world, passionate environmentalist. So they are exploring global climate change, alternative energies, fossil fuels, human population, and they go on. Anything that's current, they're bringing it to the table. So physics, now's the time for the kids. I'm going to introduce to you Katrina Lou and Mr. Welty, and they're going to give a little presentation on what's happening in our physics department.
So one of the really cool things we did earlier this year was create our own bumper with a partner, and every single physics class did this. And the point of the bumper, the point of the project was design a bumper to provide the impulse to a car to change the car's momentum and bring it down to zero. So like in a regular car, using a bumper and trying to minimize the force of the impact. So as the bump, the bumper creates an increase in time, which then lowers the force of the collision. And the only materials we had were three sheets of paper and that tape you see in the front, so we had to be really innovative. And so part of the project, we took slow motion videos. Okay. Right, like right here. And, oh, I'm sorry. And my design is actually on the left, and so that was the first step. And then we made the bumper, which is in the center, and then tested it, and we used an app called Graphical Analysis from Merneier, and on that app, it had the force, the amount of Newtons. And then we used the videos and the graph, and the app to go back and try to make the bumper again to improve our results. So that was really cool.
And that's Katrina's design right there as well, that you see. Let's see. How do we go next? Have you? We're back.
A little love technology, right?
All right. We just want to share some activities that the science, the physics teachers are working on currently. Right now, we're talking about waves in all of our classes, and you can see the lower-left picture, students observing the diffraction of water waves through our ripple tanks. Also, in the upper-right, students in the hallway making standing waves on a slinky. I believe that is second-order standing wave right there. And then we also looked into, we have wave machines that, that we pre-purchased, but we figured out these were a little more fun in making a wave machine out of, so that's duct tape through the center, skewers, and Sour Patch Kids on the ends of those. And you actually participated in that and made one of those. So they made their skewers, we brought them up and taped those, and that works great to show transverse waves, different wave behaviors as reflection and refraction as well. So always trying to find something innovative and new to do to just keep it fun.
Thank you, physics crew. All right, let's see if we can, oh, boy. Move back to the standard. All right, next up is Jack Jankovic, who's part of the Science Olympiad team, and he is the team designer.
Yes.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name's Jack Jankovic. I'm a senior here at Algonquin. I'm a part of the Science Olympiad Club, which is advised by Mr. Largest and Mr. Wadman, you see on the right and left. So Science Olympiad Club is basically a competitive club that combines aspects of science, like engineering, biology, physics, and chemistry into one competitive club. So in Science Olympiad, what happens is you get a list of requirements and a design that you have to create by the end of the year. And that's headed up by the Science Olympiad Organization, which is a national organization that gives those requirements to every school in the nation that has Science Olympiad. And we have to, we're in charge of designing, us, the kids are in charge of designing, and perfecting that to, designing and perfecting those designs, so when we get to a competition, we can perform the best in place nationally. So this year, we went to two competitions. One was at MIT in Boston, and one was at Framingham State. I was in charge of designing a helicopter, rubber-band helicopter for a competition at MIT. Our MIT competition is really used to refine our designs, work out any kinks the designs might have. And then the FSU competition at Framingham State is the, the state competition, and that's when you're ranked in your state. So this year, our helicopter was ranked eighth in the state, I'm proud to say, which, it took a lot of work, a lot of refinement. In designing something like that, takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I just, I owe it to the science department for all the education and all of the, the inspiration they've given me throughout my four years here.
Okay. Next, we have representation from the Y's Women in Science and Engineering, and we have Arianna Endua. Thank you.
So we're juniors at Algonquin, and we're a part of Y's, and our main goal is to inspire women to pursue science, engineering, STEM, science, engineering, technology, and math.
So we have speakers come to our meetings, usually women in STEM, to talk to us and to inspire some of our members. And we also do a lot of outreach, so working with schools and girls in the community. And we're currently trying to work with Trotter Middle School, the girls in their robotics club, and we're going to work with them and show them how to use circuit boards, and we're going to go through with a game. We're going to help them build them, and then they're going to play a little game with the little lights that they just made.
So we're going to teach them about circuits and electrostatics, which is the fundamentals of electrical engineering.
Our next group is our Science Research Club, and I have Alex Chen and Andrew Gao that'll share some of their.
Thank you. So I'm Alex, and.
I'm Andrew.
Yeah, so we're both seniors here at Algonquin, and we founded this club two years ago, so it's a very new club relative to some of these other clubs. So I was very, very fortunate to have had the experience of studying carbon nanotubes at Northeastern University and doing research on that under Professor Carol Livermore. And I, we really got together and thought that it'd be good if Algonquin here had a club where students could explore less structured research and experimentation as far as in the science field. The classroom and the teachers do a great job in the classroom of structuring labs so that students can explore fundamental concepts, but it's really been great to be less structured and be more flexible in our approach to really looking into topics of interest for our students. And so we're really fortunate to have Mr. Cushing, who's an incredible advisor. He comes to school super early every single morning and stays after really late, and he even accommodates us while he's coaching boys tennis, which is this spring season. So he's been a fantastic advisor for us. So we're going to talk about two of our biggest projects over the course of our two years, and so this is our first one. So this was last year, conducting solar panel research. With all of the environmental sustainability issues that the world is currently facing, we thought this would be very appropriate to look into. And so we created our own device using an Arduino board and a breadboard to sense the light intensity coming onto the roof of the school. And then working with our school's janitorial faculty, we really were able to get a hands-on approach to researching just how much energy would be produced by potential solar panel installation. Unfortunately, we found that over the course of leaving this sensor on the roof and recording data, that given the cost of likely replacing the roof and conducting maintenance on the roof in the near future, it really wouldn't be that economically feasible currently to install solar panels onto our roof. So that would definitely be something to look into in the future, but. Yeah, I know, we also talked, and they did say they had a consulting service that came in to do similar things, so yeah.
We're going to call you back from college to come in and join us with this project, Alex.
So it was great to work with, with the school, and also great to have the kids explore this interesting topic.
And for our other big projects, this is more recent, it was also an environmental-based project. So we were contacted by somebody who worked at Encyclopedia of Life, and they were doing a challenge called City Nature Challenge, and this was basically going around the Boston area and finding certain species and logging them in their app to be used at research facilities at like Brandeis University, UMass Boston, and some MIT labs. So this was from April 27th to 30th, and we chose this nice, beautiful Saturday, and our species that we were logging were common dandelions. Not the most exciting thing, but.
Run into a snake almost.
Yeah, we did, we did run into some snakes. That was pretty exciting. So yeah, we, we logged that, and the goal for that was to be used, as I said, for research on biodiversity and potentially just the health of our environment. Is that coming?
Our next club is the Bee, oh, what's? Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. It's our Bee Club, and the Bee President is Elsa Ray.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elsa. I'm a junior. Some of you probably recognize me. I was here last month to talk about the Writing Center. Well, today, I'm here to talk about the Beekeeping Club. This is a club that I founded in my, the fall of my sophomore year with the help of our very own Ms. Sanini. I was inspired to start this club because I am a beekeeper myself at home, and I fell in love with it and thought, why not share this with the Algonquin community? It seems like it would be a very positive thing to have. So from that idea came the Beekeeping Club. We are a pretty small club, but a lot of our members are very, very dedicated, and over the years, we have had some great opportunities, such as having a master beekeeper from the Worcester County Beekeeping Association come to talk to us. We've attended a lecture from a WPI professor studying pollinators with the Science National Honor Society. And now we are fortunate enough with help from the Corridor 9 Scholastic Grant to, they gave us the money we needed to purchase a beehive, as you see in these pictures, for Algonquin. And now, that is spring 2018, we have a real functioning beehive on the Algonquin campus. It is in the Serenity Garden, and it is still fairly new. We started it in April with another donation from, of bees from the Worcester County Beekeeping Association. And from that, we are hoping to, sorry, in the future, to maybe engage in some research opportunities, to work with, again, the Worcester County Beekeeping Association, and also the horticulture classes, who are learning about importance of pollinators and farming and all that. So we're hoping to really take that far. And I know, I know that a lot of people are a little squeamish about bees, and that's, again, it's one of our goals in the Algonquin community, is to kind of end the stigma that is around bees and beekeeping, and to educate students and the community about the importance of pollinators and beekeeping in the communities. So that's a little rundown of what we do, and I think our club is going to do great things in the future. So thank you.
Is another slide? Okay. I don't think that was, that was the only one.
Great.
Okay, the last club is HOSA. I don't think I have any representation, but I want to first thank our student scientists for taking time out of their night tonight to give a. HOSA's become a pretty large group this year. We have 40 students, and this club actually has the three-pronged mission. Their mission is to have community and school involvement and outreach, service and fundraising, and competition. So back in, I think it was April, the group of students, 40 students, went off to Worcester State University, and during that day, they were involved in many competitions. They brought back many pieces of hardware, as, as they stated here. But they were in competitions, they had presentations from professionals, they were able to participate, as you can see here. So they had some competitions, they had some hands-on stations. This is like the story of my life with technology. Okay. But I think the most important thing that they did this year was their Heart Chase Day. So what they did was they had a, an event that they planned and presented to about 125 students. That was an interactive day to educate them on the health of the heart. So they had this in the gym, they had stations where kids could go to participate in stress management, exercise, cardiovascular awareness, diet, but they were all hands-on stations. So a big part of their club is to educate, and I think that certainly was, they did a great job this year in presenting to the students here at Algonquin. And I think, that might be my last slide. So, any questions? Yes?
Could you describe what the Science Innovations class course is?
Well, Mr. Welty is here, so I'm going to hand it over. So he can give it airtime.
It sounds fascinating.
Yeah, Science Innovation, this is the second year of that course, and it's kind of just extending off what they talked about with Science Research Club. It's an opportunity for students to be able to walk into that class and choose what they want to learn about. So the curriculum there is student-driven. So I've had a class of about 20 students come in, and each student is doing a different project. So one girl this year, Ava, did a project on beach conservation, and she actually did outreach to Wells, Maine, where she summer vacations there. There, when she contacted the town, she found the names of some people that attended our conference there about beach conservation, and she corresponded with a woman in New Zealand that was a graduate student, and comparing that beach in New Zealand to the beaches in Maine. So that's really my goal of that class, is that students get out of the four walls of Algonquin and make connections outside, you know, with people that are professionals in the field and, and learn from that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other? Joe?
This is Annie and Mr. Wally. I'd like to thank you and the student scientists for giving your time in your busy schedule to come and present and educate us on what is going on in the science classes. And it's wonderful to hear about all the outgrowth, the new club that came up, the Science Research Club, that came from interest and it seems a wonderful group to start with that initiative and to get the interest from the students to do it. And even the bee club getting funding. I mean, as we look at it and we talk about our budgets many times, you know, we always hear about the wonderful awarding of grants and that. It's nice to hear about the Corridor Nine that gave it to it and also the other funding sources that they had. The one question I had about the WISE was, the two wonderful ladies mentioned about they were going to Trotter. Will they be going to Malacan sometime?
I would assume so. I can certainly make sure that they're going to both towns. It's new this year, so I think it's just getting going. So I'll encourage them to get to both schools. It's important.
Because I think it's wonderful. We always talked about when the high school kids go down to the eighth grades and talk about, you know, eighth grade coming up to ninth grade about the sports and all the clubs and everything like that. But it's wonderful for them to go down and be the mentors and to get girls or anyone else, you know, interested in the science field and to see what the rich program we have up here at Algonquin. So my hands off to the faculty and your other faculty members and also the student scientists that are here tonight.
They're great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Because it always is. You know, just from a budget point of view and stuff, I always ask.
I know. I'm ready for you.
Are we turning away kids who want to enroll in science classes because we don't have enough faculty and... Or is there any other significant equipment that you've been looking for?
First of all, I think we are very well-supported. As I've always said, our budget is... You know, we do what we can with the budget. You'd always want more, right? I mean, I'd be crazy not to say you want more.
Are we turning away kids? Are we turning away kids?
I don't think we're turning away kids right now, no. Because what I see happening in our elective courses is sometimes is that high interest as we see in the forensic science next year, but maybe a decline in the biotechnology. I think we are really circulating around based on the interest and balancing the best we can. I mean, sure, we could probably offer more sections, but then you'd have low numbers. And would that be economical to run a class at 12? I don't think so. So I, you know, I also look at it from a budget, being positive on the budget. You know, I'm not going to run a course that's nine or 10 kids. It's just not economical. I don't know if I'm saying the right thing or not. That's how I run my house all day, you know?
Any other?
Well, I'd like to thank you also for coming in. I really enjoyed bringing in the clubs, like, because oftentimes we see what's going on in the classroom, the different curriculum, but I like to focus on, you know, the different clubs that are related to the sciences and where those are very, you know, pretty much all student-driven and initiative of, you know, applying what they've learned in the classroom into their clubs that they choose or even, you know, the inquiry that the classroom has inspired in them to make a club and/or to do a project within a club that's what science is all about, right?
It is. We have a lot of good teachers that spend a lot of time with these kids. And as someone mentioned, Mr. Cushing is here early. I would say at least half of my department is here before 6:00 and here late at night. Yes. Yes, we are. We light this side of the building up, believe me. Yeah.
I can attest to that because they would like me to make the snow calls at 4:00 because they've already left their house.
They're not doing that yet for us, but that's okay.
Yes, they're trying.
We appreciate everything that you give to us. You know, we've had nothing but great support in all the years that I've been here and that's a lot.
I just would like to add, you know, STEM is the latest acronym for science. But as you listen to the presentation, science integrated with technology, engineering, and math has been alive in our science department before the acronym was made popular. And you can see that through not only the coursework and the courses that are offered to our students, but just the enthusiasm for each of the clubs and just the entrepreneurial innovative spirit that exists in this department. If there's a wish, there's a club. And, you know, they rise to the occasion and our teachers do time and time again in the science department. So just always exciting to hear your presentation and to really experience what's new and innovative in the sciences. And Alex and Andrew, please don't go too far. We're still not sure about the feasibility of the solar, but we will use your research to assist us in the completion of that analysis.
You can keep, you can graduate, you know. She keeps out that diploma.
Good? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is legislative update.
I do. I actually do. I actually share this time often with Mr. Desmond, but in your packets or beneath your packets is the latest release from the Senate Ways and Means Committee. While our budget is approved, the conversations still continue. And at the regional level, we often know that in August or September, we're taking yet another assessment adjustment vote based on what the governor and all those at the State House continue to do and work on up to and sometimes past July 1. So this is just the latest update, but there is some good news, particularly for the regional school district. I also have a letter prepared for the regional district to consider signing that would increase regional transportation reimbursement into the 85% range. This was an amendment, we learned of it at the Myers Board last week and they said this was going to be forthcoming. It's an amendment to a bill that's already in consideration or under consideration in the Senate. It's an amendment to Bill Number 242 in support of the regional transportation reimbursement increase presented by Senator Goby and Senator Seer. And this will be moving pretty quickly along. They think they're going to be taking this up for consideration next week, probably around May 21st. So everyone, all of the regional districts certainly are being asked to consider this and to sign on in support of this amendment. So I do have a letter prepared should the committee want to also take that position to Senator Eldrich and to Senator Chandler at this point for signing after the meeting. This is our best chance. I don't think I've seen the number 85 in eight years. I would also add that while the extraordinary relief did come through and the regional district realized about a $40,000 extraordinary relief, successful claim because of the higher costs than last year for our special ed services, that will need to be expended and we definitely have plans for that to be expended by June 30th. The circuit breaker discussion that's been ongoing has not yielded a positive result at this point. The last we knew, there was a bill in front of Governor Baker to sign and that would have restored the percent to somewhere in the 72% range, but we have not... There's been no decision on that. So those are the two legislative updates for tonight.
Okay. So would the transportation, that that increase would be the similar kind of thing where we'd set up a fund or...
This would be actually a reimbursement for our transportation like we get every year. So it would be directly tied to our appropriation. Yeah. So we're... I think they're hoping that it settles somewhere around 78%, but it certainly would be about 6% to 7% higher than what we're seeing now.
Okay, the next item.
Do we need a vote on that?
I have a last question. On the document that you passed out, on the second page on the back, the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth bullet down, it talked about the ELL calculation and it said regional district assessments would likely be affected. Do you know in what way that would be affected or...
It's too soon. Yeah, it's too soon to predict whether that would be an increase or a decrease for us. I think this is a calculation that would factor into the Chapter 70 formula, which is still under consideration because these changes do affect some sort of Chapter 70 increase or decrease. The regional projection based on some of their changes right now on the numbers that are going in is not a significant increase. The increases are ranging somewhere between 12 and 30, $40,000 for typical districts like ours. So it's a little bit too premature to assess what that assessment change would be. It's great, though, I think, to see that the conversations that are taking place at this level continue to be in support of the recommendations, the Chapter 70 Financial Review Board that was in place and made several recommendations three or four years ago now. So it's good to see that some of those conversations are continuing and some of those adjustments to the Chapter 70 calculations could yield some benefits to us, but at this point, it's too early to assess what that is. And as we know, this will go back and forth three or four more times before we actually see any changes in our assessments, but it's good to be mindful of it. For example, this transportation is something that we can do now.
Right.
And I think Paul was going to mention whether we need to take a vote in support of this.
Exactly what I was going to ask. Well, that's my question. Do we need to take a vote to agree to sign the letter or does whoever wants to just sign it or...
I think we could do both. We could take a vote in support of this and sign the letter.
All right. I'll move that we vote to support sending the letter that Superintendent described encouraging our legislators to raise the transportation reimbursement rate to 85%.
Moved by Paul. Desmond, seconded by Paul. Baca, any discussion?
It's a great idea. We should do this.
All right. Seeing further, all those in favor of signing the letter? Oppose? And all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take care of that at the end. The next item is the school choice vote.
I would move that we follow the recommendation of the Superintendent and pass policies and vote not to participate in school choice for the 2018-2019 school year.
Okay, moved by Paul. Seconded by Paul Desmond. Any discussion?
I used to chase this a little bit, you know, for some number of years, thinking five or six grand, you know, to put one kid in a classroom, it was kind of incremental money without much incremental cost. But I think that we've done a good job, in fact, of chasing some of the other sources to bring other students into the building for the same sort of mindset and yet the income that we get from it is higher, so much higher, I would suggest. And so I'm no longer an advocate for school choice, haven't been for a couple of years.
I just had to take a moment there. I had to my breath. I actually had an update in the night because I was waiting for the... So how is that going? We actually, our fifth student will be coming in next year and so that puts the tuition account, which we sort of set aside to increase our world languages down the road and wanted to make sure that we had enough money set aside so that we could fund a staff position for a couple of years before we slowly transitioned those costs into the operational budget. So with that student enrolling, we will have about $80,000 set aside in that tuition revolving account and we do anticipate taking in a couple more students on a half-time basis. So they will be coming in first semester and departing second semester, which I had some concerns about. We talked about at length with the high school administration and just so enthusiastic to continue this program. Director of Guidance Lisa Conry does an amazing job moving forward. We've recertified from Homeland Security, which was an interesting process in order for us to continue issuing the documentation that's necessary to bring these students over for that short period of time. And we had a good time doing that, more times than we would have liked because dealing with Homeland Security and entering into their SEVIS database is an exciting, exciting challenge. So yeah, we're on track. Next year, we might be having the conversation about do we have enough to bring in a part-time teacher for maybe Mandarin and we could probably fund that position without impacting the operational budget for a couple of years. So I think, you know, this is new for Sarah too as well, Dr. Walsh, and just been a great collaboration.
Awesome. Great. Any other discussion on the school choice? Seeing none, all those in favor of not...
I'd like to make a motion. About school choice, apparently we need special...
Voting.
Special language.
Special choice, special language.
I move that the Northborough/Southborough Regional School District vote to not participate in school choice in the FY19 school year and to direct the Superintendent to inform Department of Elementary and Secondary Education no later than June 1st, 2018, of this vote.
Well, I'll second that.
And seconded by Paul Baca.
So just to be clear, we're voting for this...
For this motion not to participate.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor of this motion? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Superintendent's Report to the Committee.
One day, I'm going to flip this around just so I'm not following Dr. Walsh's presentation, but not tonight, so.
You're up.
All right. I'm excited. So it's definitely to do this tonight and one more time, correct? So I might go a little longer. I'm going to steal my time. I thought about doing five pages, but I kept it to four. So I just wanted to do my quick little blurb on our math team. They have continued their stellar performance and their collaboration. Remember, they also work with one of our eighth graders coming up, third in Class A. We have perfect scores coming from our students and what's most exciting about our math teams is that they enjoy the competition and spirit of competition. They talk about it, they work together, you see them talking about it at lunch. So I just want to give a kudos to them. We mentioned earlier the collaboration with the middle schools is ongoing, so that's very exciting. It helps the seamless transition from eighth to ninth and they're doing it through math, so very, very fun. I'm going to skip down to our music department. They did a three-day tour of New York City. I haven't had the opportunity to experience that tour with them, but some elbow jabbing at Ms. Collins, she sent me a video clip of the children, our chorus, singing in the church. Breathtaking. I must have played it for anybody and everybody, just stopping random strangers on the streets because it was unbelievable. And I know that we've experienced it when we come in through the rotunda on open house and hear the children singing the acoustics of the church and their voices just came together. And I would play for you right now, but I know it would be awkward and I'd probably go too long, but bar none. And speaking of the arts, you'll see me talk about it in a minute. If you get a chance, our art show is going on. We had to reschedule our opening night from last night to this coming Monday. Sneak a peek, unlock it, talk about it. I posted a video about that too, very exciting. But that's where you showcase the work from the entire year that all of our children have been working on. It comes to that culminating event for them. They're very excited to speak about it. You can see their work. There's different aspects of work from the pottery, from sculpture, to different forms of artistic display. So that's up now, in case you can't make it Monday, and tried to come yesterday, so I will open that. If you want to bring the camera down, you can go down and check that out. Very excited about it. Our computer science team, we have a great computer science program here and I just want to give a shout out to them. They have been plugging away at competitions, stellar competitions. They enjoy what they do. They enjoy programming. We have a programming computer class or club after school, so they take it out of the classroom. I don't give them enough accolades because they're just starting, so I wanted to take that moment with only two opportunities to do this before the end of the year to just say super kudos to them. Yes, they're winning and they're competing all across the state, but more importantly, they're enjoying the work that they do in computer science and that's where the work becomes very exciting. Interactivity in clubs, our robotics team attended the first ever robotics world championship and nationally, they came 27th within their division of 70 teams. They, if you've ever witnessed them, if you've ever been able to participate, I know that they're having their end-of-the-year gathering. They have so many displays. I don't know how they do what they do, but it's exciting and they explain to me and it makes sense, so that's really exciting too because if you can teach it, then you know it. So another testament where they're taking their work that they do in the classroom and they're applying it live time. Our DECA team, as you've heard me speak about all year, they went to their international competition. We had 28 students. Every single student scored high. Every single student had a stellar performance, so wanted to give them a shout out. I was going to talk about HOSA, but Ms. Sanini definitely upstaged me on that, so I snuck in the picture, but wanted to put it in there. If you were here Friday night last week, it was a gorgeous night. We had Relay for Life, huge, successful event here right out of the high school. Mr. Chap puts it on, which is exciting. And I wanted to give a shout out to our freshman steering committee. Here we have a new group of students in Algonquin and they're looking at one of our traditions, which is the Moonlight Dance, a dance that we host towards the end of the year, and they're revamping it because it has low enrollment. And as everyone is aware of, we've had some really successful social events this year. Winter Ball was a huge success. You're going to hear me speak about Senior Ball. I just want to give a shout out to our freshman class who are presenting an opportunity for children to come, make positive connections with their peers on a summer night... for children to come, make positive connections with their peers on a summer night, and enjoy this dance. So it's going to be here in the back by the tennis courts, if you want to come join. They've got this great stage lighting going on with, I think it's Christmas lights, and oddly enough, I have a random amount of those that I'm going to donate, so if you have Christmas lights, they'd love them. But I just, I think it's really fun to see the freshman class make their mark at Algonquin and revamp a tradition and bring new light to it, to have all of the students join, every class grade. So even though they're running it, everybody's happy to come. Our Harbingers at it again. They were the, voted the Online Pacemaker Award by National Scholastic Press Association, and why I want to point that out is it's one of only twenty-two other schools nationally that have earned this award. And I know you've heard me speak about them previously. They continue to push their work. They continue to collaborate and push their growth. If you've ever had the opportunity to be interviewed by one of their members, they're phenomenal, the work that they do, and then they capture your thoughts and recreate them on paper, which is just an artistic skill that I don't necessarily own, and I know all of us have had the opportunity to read the Harbinger, so I wanted to give them a shout out. I did want to tell Alex Chen, congratulations for being T-Hawk for the month, but he has a busy schedule, but he'll be back for solar discussion, so it's fine. But we have our T-Hawks of the Month that I definitely highlighted in our principal report, so thank you to Mr. Whitten. He has brought this back, and he has kept it up, and the kids are excited about it. I attended our captain's breakfast, in which they talked about how much they thoroughly enjoyed the time taken to recognize each of our students and the work that they do, both on and off the field, and in and out of the courts, and everything that goes on in their day, and they expressed that to Mr. Whitten and some of the traditions that they wanted to continue. Shout out to Alex, who was named All-American for track and field. That's quite an honor and difficult to earn. And I want to take a moment to talk about our tennis team. If anyone's had the opportunity to come and be a part of our sports, or view our sports, spectate our sports, to get to and fro the baseball fields, the softball fields, soccer fields, up on the stadium, you kind of cut through the tennis courts, right? And you're kind of going by. One of the parents reached out to Mr. Whitten and myself and said that T-Hawk Nation was in full strength. They were here for the spring season, snow finally melted, which was nice, and every time an athlete was coming from or to the school to go to practice or to a game, they high-fived tennis players. They gave them a shout-out. They said, like, "Great job," back and forth, great comments. That is the culture that we want to foster at Algonquin. From every level, from freshman, and the parent that reached out was a freshman parent, to our seniors, every student felt cherished. Every student felt that their sport was important as they went back and forth through the tennis courts. And it's a testament to the work that Mr. Whitten does, and it's just a testament to our community and the support that they offer our children and how fantastic our children are. So I know that that was long-winded, but it just paints the spirit that we have here at Algonquin and truly speaks about the excellence that we have. Grace and Julianne went to Gillette Stadium to represent us in Women in Sports Day, both phenomenal athletes, and they participate in multiple clubs and activities. Jumping down to department updates, shout out for Ms. Burns, our Royal Ministry Department head. She is going to present at the National Council for Social Studies National Conference. This just speaks to the excellence of our educators, which you also heard tonight from Mr. Wealthy and Ms. Anini. She is a true pillar to the successes here at Algonquin, and I just wanted to make sure to mention her tonight. For fine arts, I didn't want to give my shout-outs for some of their upcoming events. You heard me speak about the art event, but I am willing to give you a sneak peek in case you can't come Monday. Pops Night's coming up. It's only two weeks away. I'm really excited. I've never experienced Pop Night, so I can't wait. You can obviously see how excited I am to experience it. And then we have a musical for the spring coming up. We're going to be doing Wegmans on June 7th and 8th, and the showings are listed there. Huge participation from our student population. We have sixty-one students that are participating in this, which is a big cast, so we're really excited to have that be a part of it. I'm skipping science because I was talking about Mr. Wealthy's class, and interestingly enough, I was there the day that they were doing the, what was it, Sour Patch Kids Wave? And I was like, "Oh, what's this?" Bing! And of course, the wave started, and it was fantastic, and it came from the students. So I think I didn't want to photobomb it. I'm off to the side. Shout out to our, to Ms. Roto Webb, to all of our ESL teachers. They put on a fantastic community event called International Night here at Algonquin. We had the opportunity to host it. We had two-hundred-and-fifty families come to the school and attend this event, where not only could they familiarize themselves with Algonquin, they received resources, information, ongoing supports, they played games. It's just a great way to connect families of different cultures. They had a photo booth. I think that's Alex there with the sunglasses, by the way, holding it up, holding it up as a photobomb. But it shows that the SWAT team came. The SWAT team came and set up this whole photo booth to support the ESL families and the diversity learning, and again, you have another club or sport or activity supporting another community, talking to the culture of Algonquin. Algonquin Games, I got to experience it. It was this past week. Weather was phenomenal. Our students enjoyed it. Our high school students came out to the track and created a cheer tunnel for all of our Algonquin athletes that were participating in the Algonquin Games. And thank you to Ms. Allen and the work that Student Support did in putting that together. That was an extremely fun event, and the community was there to support us. Our Unified Singing Club sang the National Anthem, recorded it, fantastic. I wanted to talk about our Junior Safe Driving Event. We revamped that this year in leveraging the skills by Ms. Mackey, Ms. Haberman, and I'm forgetting someone, Ms. Hodgkins. They worked with their task group, and they linked up with the local fire department and police department, created a whole skit using our drama department. Everything was developed by the students, and they reenacted the crash scene. They were able to create surround sounds so the students could hear the conversations and experience what was going on. Timing is priceless. We have the junior prom coming up this Saturday, which we're very excited about. We just had the senior prom, and anything that we can do to educate our children, to keep them safe, and the community really came forward on this one and supported us, so wanted to say thank you for that. And on the last page, I just wanted to jump to the bottom. I really want to take a moment to thank our APTO. They, the support that they give us and the community gives us. I got to experience the Teacher Appreciation Breakfast. Parents, the day before and that day, just continued to bring in treats and different gifts for our teachers and show them how much they appreciate them. The work is hard. I cannot believe that I have to compete with the Science Department to get here first, but it is a fact. They are here by six o'clock, and I think I was driving, and one of them, like, "Oh, he got ahead of me today." But they're here. They're here long hours, and the community lets them know how great that they are, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for that and for the work the APTO did. I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Johnson and Ms. Steele, that are our senior class advisors. We hosted the Senior Ball this year at Wachusett. It was a phenomenal event. It was very inclusive. There was a bunch of different activities the students could participate in. They all spoke about how much fun they had. They did their homework for fun on the bus on the way there and on the way home, and they sang songs. I mean, every part of the event was about being a part of Algonquin, and I know that our junior class advisors, Ms. Flynn and Ms. Arvin Indian, are thinking about doing at Wachusett again, because it was a happy, healthy, safe, fun event for our children to participate in, and it used some of our local resources. So thank you for that. And anybody looking for something to do Saturday night? We need some volunteers for our junior post-prom party, put on by our APTO, which supports safety after the prom. And that is it.
Wow. Again, nothing left, at least only left on turn. I do want to tell you, the Pops Night is fantastic. I came to it before my kids were in school, and my daughter, when she graduated, I think I went one more year, then I couldn't get her to come with me the other years, but I'm just going to come anyways if I'm back in time from work, but it's phenomenal. I love it. So I recommend that to everyone as well. And the Wegmans and musical, that'll be fun, too. Any other, any comments?
Other than in the packet is also the, I think, the first time in a while we've seen a complete compilation of senior week activities, so it's nice to have this included because we don't always have all of that information in snapshots, so I thank the high school for providing this, and if this wasn't busy enough, we've got a full week of senior activities to experience.
I wanted to make one little comment on the Relay for Life. I did, my daughter participated in that, so I got a sense of what that was all about, and it really was an impressive event. I had teams of like ten kids each, and I don't know how many teams, it had to be, you know, a dozen or twenty or something, and plus a lot of parent participation. They had, you know, they stayed out all night, and they had parents chaperoning, you know, in shifts, I guess, all night, so, and they'll be doing it again for the junior prom, I guess, so it's, you know, like you said, it's just a great example of Algonquin spirit on the part of the kids as well as the parents.
Wonderful news to hear. So the next we have is the enrollments.
Yes, and all those wonderful kids are experienced here in numbers. So here's our monthly enrollments next year. Just as a reminder, in June, we will be presenting, moving forward to next year, prior to October 1's enrollment, a hundred percent of both Southborough and Northborough in the number projections. That's helpful to our towns as they start to build their budgets and consider minimum local contribution amounts. Also in the packet is our monthly expenditure report, and this is a critical report that we take a look at probably daily now as we move closer to our year end. So tonight, I would like, again, a vote to approve until audited. Any committee?
I move that we approve the monthly general fund expenditure report as of April 30th, 2018, until audited.
Moved by John Kane, seconded by Paul Butka. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
And also, we've been, particularly this year, adding to that vote, the statement of revenue review, again, vote to approve until audited from the committee. If I have?
I move that we approve the Northborough/Southborough Regional School District Statement of Revenue dated April 30th, 2018, until audited.
Moved by John Kane, seconded by Paul Butka. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on that. Medicaid reimbursement, looks like we got some money that we weren't expecting.
I don't know if Matt, you want to speak to this? We typically get Medicaid reimbursement. We never know how much. It's never reported on the regional side. It's always reported on the regional side because, again, we're considered a town. We do get Medicaid reimbursement at both the K-8 levels, but it goes directly to our towns. Here at the regional level, we're able to capture those funds in-house. So that's a fluctuating number, depending on the services and the number of students who receive those services that are Medicaid eligible. So it's hard to predict. We do actually, in our budgets, carry an appropriation amount for the cost of providing those calculations. We have someone outside a contracted services provider to work with us to calculate all these amounts, not only for the regional level, but also for our two-member towns. So that's always a good thing to see.
Right. Same with the activity fees, which are, I think, all over a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm. It's been a great year working with the high school, not only for activity fees, but our parking fees, and we're in good shape on our athletic receipts as well, which we actually factored into our FY20 budget, nineteen budget, anticipating these revenues.
Yes. Since you brought up about the Medicaid and the contract, is that like a, is that a set amount, or is it dependent on how much they bring in?
It's a contracted price.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the amount of money that gets brought in, so.
Okay. Okay, so if they don't bring in, they don't, there's no base amount we have to give them?
There is a base, I think there's a base amount, and then there might be an over, but we sign a contract with them for those services. But again, it's also for the time. Right. It's also for Northborough and Southborough K-8s.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so that's statement of revenue. Distribution of the approved budget. FY19?
You have to vote on this.
Oh, sorry. All right. We had the move, and we seconded, and you asked the question. All right. So all those in favor of the department of revenue? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so moving on to the distribution of the approved budget. And we have a discussion in the cafeteria?
Yes, thank you. In your stack of papers underneath your envelope is probably the cafeteria analysis that I've been working on. We talked earlier this year about taking a look at what our fees were and our costs were, not only in terms of facilities rentals, which we're still working on the analysis, but also at the regional level, our things like cafeteria costs. And so what normally happens is if the cafeteria is not, does not end up in the black, that money is offset, any deficit is offset by the appropriated, any balances left due to efficiencies through the operational year at the end of the year. So what that basically means is if the cafeteria account is in the red, then that money has to be offset before moving on to the next fiscal year, and that offset usually is from the operational budget, which means any of funds that are in the deficit at the cafeteria account then takes away from any money that we can either continue to provide supply purchases and resource purchases, or in fact, turn back to E and D. So it does affect our overall funding in terms of our E and D account, but also is money that would no longer be available to purchase, you know, prepaid special ed costs and those kinds of things. So what we did do, working with the food service director, but the cafeteria manager here at the high school, who does a phenomenal job in probably one of the more challenging food service environments here at the high school because of the number of offerings we have and just, you know, the fact that it's a high school. We've drawn some assumptions, made some assumptions, and the assumptions are on the bottom of the document, and what you have in front of you is an analysis of our FY2017 actuals. The good news about the cafeteria account at the high school level is we are revolving forward a positive balance, but what will happen is that positive balance will quickly move into the zero range, and then from that, we've just basically expended all of our revolving account money. So we've based the high school's projections for the end of the year and then assumed no change in FY2019 in terms of revenue, but of course, increasing costs. So at the high school level, they offer an interesting meal option, and I've attached a menu that would probably explain it even more so. The full meal is the hot meal, which is defined as everything in the square. We know that food service in today's age is highly regulated by the federal government, not only in terms of what they consider serving size-appropriate, but also nutrition, and that in fact affects our ability to receive reimbursement from state and federal level. And so for full meals, which is basically the hot meal that we're probably all used to, purchasing when we were in school, you'll see our projected revenues for the end of this year. The optional meals at the high school is anything that's optional in that last column, whether it's the grab-and-go or the hotline or the made-to-order. So the difference between the two basically is two-seventy-five or three dollars. With the high school level, it's very difficult to assess participation rates, because as we know, a high school student might buy a two-seventy-five meal or the hot lunch and then move over and buy something that's in the grab-and-go option. So it's difficult to exact our participation rate, but we have calculated it at about thirty-eight percent right now at the high school level. We have the optional meals again, which is in the last column. We have a miscellaneous receipts, which is sort of catering that our own cafeteria staff would do, so if we had a professional development opportunity here and we were providing some sort of refreshments for that, we would go to our own cafeteria first, and then they would bill us back. So there's some revenue generated from that. We also have the Cafe Corner, which is the chips and the sort of more snack food-like, out-of-a-machine items that our students would purchase, and that generates some income. And then you also see what we receive for reimbursement on meals. And so our projected revenue, as you see, at the end of this year, again, we're out June 25th, so we have about a whole, you know, five weeks left, six weeks left of school, so that could shift higher or lower. So that is our projected income, and we have revolving account expenditures listed below. Our cafe salaries, miscellaneous expense, or things like cleaning supplies, paper goods, plastic forks or sporks, I think is the number one option today, those plastic utensils and trays and those kinds of things. We obviously have sales tax, which is flexible and based on revenue, and then we have, and purchases, and then we have our cafeteria food expense. So... So having said all of that, and looking at our current pricing structure, we would be in the deficit of about $11,000, $10,757 at the end of this year. Again, we do have a revolving balance in the cafeteria account, so we're not dipping into appropriation quite yet, but we are dipping into reserves, if you will. So as we move on to FY 19 projected, with no change in the cost of the meals, and no change in the meal structure, our revenue would be at about $4.23, because we're projecting that our reimbursement rate would increase about 3%. There's some footnotes there that indicate that historically, those reimbursement ranges would range anywhere from 3% to 4%, so we went on the low side of our projections. But expenses continue to rise. Our salaries tend to rise at the rate of our contractual obligations, which is about 2%. Our cafeteria staff here is not under contract, so we try to stay competitive with what our contractual cafeteria workers' rates are. And then, again, we have increases in, in all of the other expenditure line items. For calculations, we used reasonable cost estimates, projected forward about a 5% increase in revenue on the cafe corner, which are those snack machine-like equivalent purchases. The reimbursement rate, again, conservative at 3%. The average participation rate is 528 average meals served per day. That doesn't mean that's the number of kids, you know, purchased, that are purchasing those meals, because they could purchase several. So it's about a 38%. Then our, our expense projections, again, I use the 2% salary increase, and approximately a 10% increase on miscellaneous food costs and taxes. If we increased our meals at a quarter and we stayed for 25 cents on both the full meal and the optional meals, the cost, if a child purchased a meal every day for 180 days, would be about $45. I have to share with you that, looking historically at the price increases over time, for some strange reason, we've gone, in 2009, 2004 to 2009, or a five-year differential, we had an increase. And then we went, we had an increase from 2009 to 2012, three years. We have not had an increase in seven years. So we're moving from 2012 to 2019 fiscal year. So again, salaries have been increasing 2% a year, for the most part, and so have all the other increases, costs. So you can see, if we make no change in FY 2019, we would have a deficit of about $31,000, which would pretty much wipe out any balance, positive balance we had in the revolving account, and then ever after, we're, we're running in the deficit. I will have to say that increasing costs is not just the answer. A participation rate of 38% is low, and so we need to work on other aspects of, of that, really looking and studying at what our meal offerings are, and digging a little bit more deeply into that participation number. That concerns me. It, it should be much higher than that, and so we've had this discussion at each of the K-8s. Both of the K-8s have already voted an increase of 25 cents, because theirs is a similar projection. And the conversations really have gone in the direction of, we need to form a study group and look at what our meal planning options are for our students, and really go back to our students and say, you know, what, what would you like to see? And make sure that we structure things that really are nutritious, certainly, meet the standards, but also are things that students want to, to enjoy. Lunch for kids, not only because it's 20 minutes of time to chat with their friends, but it's, it's all about nutrition, and it's all about giving them the energy and what they need to continue through their day. So that is something that this analysis, doing this in all three districts, has really brought to the forefront of our conversation. So we're looking forward to doing that good work in the next months, several months to follow, and it'll probably go into next year. So we do not need a vote tonight, but I did want to put this in front of you, because what we would like to see happen is if we are going to see an increased cost here at the high school, we're able to present this information to our communities sooner than later. And we do have paperwork in terms of eligibility for reimbursement and things like that, that we would want to put before our parents, and make a change by July 1.
So, as far as participation rate, I know from my household, I have one that will never buy. Sadly, I only have three more weeks to make a lunch. And my daughter does buy, but a comment that comes out a lot, and from my son that graduated last year, was that the, the time they have to eat versus the time they have to stand in line, it just sometimes, it's not enough time.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I don't, you know, I don't know how you make the lines go faster, but I don't, you know, I don't know if there's a way to study that piece of it. Because maybe your participation rate isn't that high, because kids, you know, by the time they get there, they sit down, then they go stand in line for a while, and they get back. I mean, you can't really, you know, you just shove something in your mouth and walk down the door.
Right, that's great, and I think that's an excellent point.
So I don't, you know.
I heard the same thing from my daughter. She said she can't buy because it takes her too long to get there from wherever she's coming from, and by that time, the line's too long.
Kathleen?
So, so my feedback about my kid's experience is old, but my other feedback is very current, and that is that, so I had a football player, and he could not, and this isn't our school's fault, this is the federal guidelines, but he could not get enough food in one lunch to, to, to fill him up. So when he did buy, it would be a double lunch. And oh, by the way, another plug for the cookies, because I got to say, the cookies in this cafeteria are like better than Panera Bread. But anyway. So, so that also messes up your participation rate, because he's buying double, right?
And a lot of kids do.
And a lot of kids probably do, if they're buying. So, but the other thing I want to point out is, once you start, especially if you increase it, and once you start getting a double lunch, plus the cookie, then you can get a really big, lot of food, healthy meal at Chipotle. And so I was in Chipotle at 2:00 the other day, and the line was out the door, and it was all Algonquin kids. So I suspect maybe what they're doing is they're just bringing like snacks for lunch, and then when school is out, you know, especially if they're an athlete and they have sports to go to afterwards, and stuff like that, that's where they're getting their real food. So, you know, if we could do whatever we can do to try to bring those dollars, I mean, it's tough to compete with Chipotle, but.
It opened concessions.
The other argument with you too is that some of these kids are eating at 10:30 in the morning. But, I mean, I, I don't, you know, it's an early time to eat lunch, and I know you can't change that because it's a school day, but, you know, you're having breakfast, you know, around quarter of 7, 7, 7:15, whatever it is, and then, you know, three hours later, you know, some kids are hungry, some kids aren't going to be.
Right.
And they aren't, you know, like my, I know that one of my kids will go to Chipotle, or they'll stop someplace before practice, just because if they haven't had that, they'll go from 10:30 to 2:00.
Kathleen?
I have, my daughter is a committed vegetarian, and I see very little that she would be willing to eat. And I know a number of high school students that don't want to participate in buying lunch because of the throwaways. From an environmental sensitivity, they just can't bear it. And that has, that's been a pretty consistent theme from folks that I've been meeting of late.
When you say throwaways, do you mean the, the containers, or do you mean the food?
The trays.
The trays and stuff.
Keeps coming up.
Just from, from a money point of view, I mean, if, if we do, and I guess, if we don't vote on it this meeting, you want to vote on it next, right? Because we want to open the school year with it. If we go up to 25 cents per, we're still dipping into the revolving account by 25 grand almost, versus 36. I mean, you know, how, I mean, is that, is that enough? Well, we're going to, I mean, how do we not be dipping into, or, you know, increasing assessments, you know, by the following year? If all you've got left in the, in the revolving account is 30 grand.
It may not be. It's a step in the right direction. It's been some time before we, since we've raised the prices. I think the, the piece that's essential is that we don't wait to have conversations about the revolving accounts, because it's not just money here, it's money that really is impactful on, on the budget. And so I think that we raise it, we take a checkpoint halfway through next year, see where that is. Everything that's discussed today, this whole issue is multifaceted. It's right, it's not just about the food. I know the high school is doing, Sarah and I just had a few seconds to chat before the meeting, and they've already started to look at the schedule. There are things that can be realized through some schedule changes, so it's very timely to have this conversation as well. We know we've been, we've been talking and discussing what are our scheduling options at the high school. So, you know, not sure what, what those options might be, but to have that part of the conversation now, where we're taking a look at things, is, is important. What can be provided to students after school as well, so that they're not going down the road? There's a lot of things that have been mentioned tonight that we need to take a look at, not because it's about money, but because it's not, it's what we're not doing for our students. You know, whatever we may decide to do may cost more, but then it's about giving students choice, and it's about giving them choices that they want to participate in. So I think this, this is not just about a quarter, it's about really examining what we're doing and the practice of what we're delivering, whether it's, you know, what is the cost of the throwaway? That's kind of what was covered in the miscellaneous expense. What does that look like? And to just do a thorough analysis, it's been some time, and the students' purchasing patterns, their lifestyle changes have occurred since we've looked at this seven years ago. So all of the things that you mentioned this evening are really key, and should really be part of a comprehensive study. And we need to talk to our kids. You know, at the, the K level, I was chatting with some parents today, we had a site visit in, parents and teachers, and they were very excited about this, and, you know, I shared with them that their observations for kids at that level are critical to this conversation. What are they hearing, and, you know, what are they, what are they observing from kids? Just like you've shared for the high school level, what they are saying to you, and the feedback that you're receiving will be important. So I, I, I'm excited about the project that we're going to be embracing, and I think looking forward to coming back and reporting, you know, whether it's, you know, all these things, this is what we have planned, we haven't implemented yet, but we hear, this is where we are financially in January. I think it needs to be more often our conversation.
And then just one last comment, if I could, if we're going to vote on this next month. And, you know, we talked about increasing participation, I mean, if we increase participation, is that just going to lose more money? Or, I mean, is it, have, have we kind of run those numbers? It would be nice if we ran those.
The actual meal cost.
Before the next meeting, to see if participation went up to 50%. You know, we know, I mean, you know, is it, is it going to actually make the, the dip into the revolving account deeper?
I could probably run them before the night's end, and these numbers are embedded in my mind, and so.
I think we should vote next month. I mean, I think we should make it public and put it on the agenda, and if people want to say something, we should give them a chance to.
So if there's other information that someone, that any member would like, you know, Paul's talked about doing some scenarios in terms of participation rates, and we would have to do, I think, it based on the full and the, and the, the optional meal calculations that we use for this, and run it equally so. But if there's any other information that you'd like brought back to the table in June, if the chair doesn't mind, just send them through the chair, or send them to me, and we'll try to get that done, so that we can take a educated vote next month.
Can I ask you just a quick question? When you guys did the participation piece of it, did you, did you guys track it, like, is it higher in the fall and less in the spring time? I'm just curious to know if like the eighth years that come up here, you know, like now they can, they have a choice. Like I know, like my kids, like the cookies, you know, actually, I have a kid at this high school, and you go through their, how much they spend. Most of my boys, well, like snacks. But they have so much more of an option, so I'm curious to know if, you know, does it, is it higher in the fall, and it dips, you know?
This is average daily participation rate. Yeah, and so there was some information that I just received that would show you that progression, but this is just average daily participation over to the April 30th date extrapolated to the end of the year, based on the average meals served, and that's the participation rate. Yeah.
Certainly above and beyond all of the discussion about the meals in general, participation rates. The cost is going up 2% a year for the custodial staff, and we haven't had an increase in six, seven years, so I think even a quarter, just to keep up with that, call it a cost of living, is certainly appropriate. And I would think that we would certainly look at that very strongly next month, at least for one year, and then you take a look at it again next year, with all the changes that get made. What impact did that have on the bottom line, and how close are we?
Have you ever looked at maybe staggering the times the kids can come in? I think at any level, K through 12, there's always a line that comes in, so you don't, you know, there are people at the last of the line that don't have enough time to eat. I know this is not possible here, but the elementary level, at my school, they put half of the good, the kids that went to lunch, they went to recess, half went to recess, half had lunch, and then they changed it around, so that more kids could eat, you know, and have a longer period of time, instead of the last kid waiting, and then he only has like five minutes deep before they all go out to recess. And I didn't know, when we look at the schedule or something, is there anything that we can stagger, you know, the lunch schedules by a couple minutes, just to get it through? Or the other thing is, and I don't know, maybe it's a health issue, is that the food has to be only in the cafeteria, but if the kids are saying they're not buying the lunches because of the styrofoam trays, I assume that's what you were saying, Kathleen? I mean, is there anything that you could have a prepackaged brown bag lunch, that they could pick up at different places? Because I'm thinking kids today, they get together and they're studying together, they're working on a project, they just want to grab something as the grab and go. But can you have that at a different place for them? It's not on a tray, it's on a brown paper bag. Have the cookies inside of it, of course. What I'm hearing.
Or just have a bag of cookies.
I'm just thinking if something, and I know the time element, and kids, yeah, they're going, they're not going to eat, so then they are going to go off, they've got to get something, and, and they're going to go off to an establishment and give them money there. I'm just thinking of different ways to get the participation up, and to see fit their needs and what they need to do, and to get them to eat nutritious.
Paul? In terms of what we'd like to see, I'd like to know how much we have to raise it to get the deficit to zero. Maybe we need to go up more than 25 cents.
The 25 cents basically gets us to the average of what the other high schools are looking at, and it's just a matter of just keeping pace with them.
Right, but I mean, if we're running a deficit, that's not sustainable.
And you don't know that they haven't, they're not going to raise their prices.
Oh, absolutely. We're behind the curve on this one.
We're behind the curve already, it's, it's still be behind the curve.
And it might mean that at some future day, we do a 50 cent increase. But certainly something that we can announce next month, so that parents can plan appropriately in the summer.
Do you have any interest?
Dr. Johnson, you mentioned a study group on this issue, and I was wondering if you would talk more about that.
So this is really just something we started to take, to take a look at, but one of the things that I think we do well is when we find an issue, we come together and sort of explore what the issue really means, and how we can address it. And so usually, as a study group, the school committee provides an opportunity for the superintendent to gather different groups of people together, state various stakeholders, parents, teachers, obviously, our cafeteria managers will be a big piece of this, students at every level, to just, you know, try to identify the problems, much like we've done tonight. Maybe do some surveys, gather a lot of data and a lot of information, do some comparative analysis with other school districts, and come together and really dig into the issue. So that's something we want to launch, and I think how it evolves will depend upon the participation of the study group, and what we first identify as areas that we want to study in addressing the problem. So certainly, what do others, what do other schools do about providing and delivering the product to students? You know, have they gone back to probably the lunch ladies we know that were standing behind those steamy, steamy machines that cleaned the dishes, and we were using glass plates and so forth? You know, what does that look like in some schools? Or have all of them gone in this direction because it's cost-effective? And that was sort of a priority for them, cost-effectiveness, as opposed to environmentally conscious? So that's good work to be done. So that's good work to be done, and looking forward to bringing the group together. If I, if we are able to launch it so that we can spend some time in the summer chatting about these topics, that's good. I think sometimes we forget that there's, you know, a month and a half in the summer that we could get some traction on some of these issues, but also, you know, everyone's on vacation too, so we'll get something out to the, to the parent community and the school community soon. Was that helpful?
It is very helpful, thank you.
So I guess we'll talk about this next month as well.
Could be a weekly, a monthly agenda item.
Well, this little business. Hopefully takes action of some sort or decide not to on pricing so that we can get that out to everyone if there's any changes. And we'll hear more about the study group. Would that end up being like something that the combined committees, or would we just do individual committee updates?
Well, the topics are shared, you know, I think because of the uniqueness of the menu offerings and the concerns that we have by grade span, it might be best researched at some combined level and then discussed at each of the three committees. And, you know, the revenue projections and the, and the expense projections are different at each level, so I think that might be something we want to keep unique to the three, but certainly come together together for those research discussions.
The next item is the FY '17 audit. So every month we vote things until audited, and now we have something.
What it all means. So actually, both you and Paul were the audit subcommittee. We had a phenomenal meeting with Tom Scanlon, who is our accounting firm, and I think he gave us the green light almost all the way around, but was quick to note, as we have in our meetings, that our E and D balance is low, and that could be impactful for us as we move forward.
It just kind of underscored what we, you know, did this past year in trying to come up with the policy, and in the past maybe we were able to replenish, now we haven't dipped in not able to replenish as much. So that's important. We got a good bond rating because of our, the fact that we had a policy, and it'll, it'll be steps to take, to achieve, achieve it and cut there all at once, but it's good to see it. Paul, did you have any?
No, I mean, what I'd say that was, you know, the last couple of years from the audit versus, say, a few years earlier, you know, one of the things that came through loud and clear from the Scanlon and associate guys was how cooperative the team was with them in providing information quickly, accurately, with no delays, no, you know, no, no kind of, you know, requirements for them to go back and kind of pull information out that's, you know, clearly we were interested in it being a very transparent sort of process and function, and it has clearly moved into that space in a, in a very nice way, so everybody involved should be, you should get some kudos on that, that was pretty good. I think the other thing that I'd say is, you know, they, they were encouraging, you know, what we're trying to do in terms of, you know, post-employment, you know, benefit obligations and the like, and they, and they think that what we've, what we've chosen to do seems to make some sense, and they were pretty supportive of it, so. So those are all pretty good things, I thought, from them. It came, it was a, it was a nice, clean audit. Not, no, I mean, no real deficiencies of any kind, right?
No, and this, I think, is the earliest we looked at the audit, generally it's August, so to your point, Paul, the deficiency factor definitely has.
Yeah, and it.
Improved.
Costs you more money too, the longer the audit is for them to get the information that gets, end up reflected in future engagement contracts, proposals, so, you know, getting that audit done quickly. I mean, it used to, a while, years ago, it used to be around this time, and then it got to be later, so it's, it's very good to have it. The one thing that's new, that just to point out to members that haven't been on the region or familiar, unlike the K to eight school committees, we have our own financial finances of the town. And so it reads also like a little different than what you might be used to if you were to pick up financial statements from, from a company, a for-profit company, or even a nonprofit, they each have their little things, but the governmental entity is even more different, and where some things seem like they're so different that they appear in more than one place, what, I already looked at that statement, like, you know, and understand it, why have I seen it again? They have sorts of requirements to, if it was an accrual-based accounting as opposed to governmental-based, what would it look like? So you'll have some of those kind of statements. But basically, this is something that we have at a regional level, similar to what the towns would get, that you don't see in the K to eight. So, and it'll show you what the changes are to the E and D, that's probably the biggest thing takeaway, and you'll probably, if you look at the post-retirement health number, the liability number, kind of like, is shocking, so. So, you know, but even that, that's the estimate. But it is an issue, the idea behind the governmental accounting standards boards of, of putting that on the financial statements was so that government municipalities and governmental entities would have an idea of what they're looking at when they have these benefits. Before it was like, they didn't even know, you just pay as you go. So if anyone has any questions, can ask me, I'll do my best, or ask the, ask Matt, I can ask him as well, so however you'd like to do that.
Just for clarification, I believe that we have voted to accept the audit in the past?
Yes, yes, we need to do that. So if I have a motion? Paul?
I would move to accept the Scanlon and Associate Audit of the North Borough-South Borough Regional School District for the year ending June 30th, 2017.
Second. Second, Paul Desmond, so motion by Paul Bakka, second by Paul Desmond. Any discussion? All those in paper? Unanimous. So next we have, from old business, we have the student handbook discussion.
This is very quick. The attorney just provided us all the changes in the required legal language, and I'm, this is, I'm just going to do a visual on this. I asked Attorney McAvoy to return everything to black so that his red was really the only edits we should consider because it was starting to look like this rainbow. We had blues and reds and greens, so I just handed Sarah the copy. We managed to log on at Lincoln Street when it arrived in the inbox to present some copies. So, you know, most of it is, whatever you see in red is statute language that was updated, not, so his edits are very small compared to what we've seen in the past, which is great. So last month, we presented the student handbook. Michelle T. did a great, Tonson and I did a great job, and suggested that if you had any edits, to send them sort of my way, and then we would take care of business by moving those forward in the handbook. Did not receive any, but that's okay because we have one more month to look at them. And again, this, we would never touch the attorney's language for the most part, made some changes to the Title IX language, the bullying statute, just updated them, so whatever we are providing to our parents and to our student population is accurate and current. So that's where we are with the handbook.
So will that be available online for us to look at?
We can send you this link. In, in between now and next month. So we'll be, again, we're about two months ahead of last year, so we're in good shape with that.
Any questions? So moving on, we have policy development, the second readings of.
More good news. I'm trying to channel you, Sarah, here with the voice tone. So what we decided. I know, I'm giving you a shout out. So what we have are policies that at the last meeting or the last combined meeting, we agreed that we would bring back to each individual committee. These moved, have moved through both K eights, and we've had our second readings to the point where no edits have been made and for all questions answered. So it's for the regional committee tonight for a second read for any suggested edits, which really means that at the combined meeting, we could just move this forward with one vote, because every subcommittee, every committee, K eights and region, have had second reads, and we can approve them all at the combined meeting in June.
All right, and then if anyone happens to see something?
We can, I mean, no, yeah. I think we have one more for the, for the year combined, at region. So this one, if no edits are suggested tonight, then it'll be brought forward in June next month for a vote on all of these policies, which is phenomenal.
I think we did a lot of good work on some of these, and.
And the Health and Wellness Committee too.
Health and Wellness, yeah, there's quite a number of them, of them that.
That marching band looks to be a contact sport for the concussions policy.
It's, it's in the statute.
Yeah. One of those tubers sideways could be.
Okay, so next is audience sharing. Oh, did anyone have any questions on any, or any comments on any of those policies? Okay, haven't not seen one. And the audience sharing. Audience, anyone, any member like to?
So a question about the superintendent's evaluation and just sort of the process as we refine it and we look back in past years. So we are thinking that Superintendent Johnson will be able to distribute her summary evaluation or final evaluation electronically. And then it seems to me that in past years, what has been the big stumbling block has been technology, right? So that, you know, you, you put the document in Google Docs, and then everybody needs to log on into their North Borough-South Borough Gmail, no, North Borough-South Borough, yeah, Gmail, in order to get at it, and then people who didn't use it, you know, were ready to sit down to do the evaluation and they couldn't even get in. Is it unreasonable to ask, once it has, like, to, to sort of put another due date, which is not to do the evaluation, but just to get in and, and make sure that you can get in, because it's a lot easier? And, I mean, and maybe it's an artificial, but I'm just trying to get to the point where we can increase participation. And so if we can get past the technical glitches and not ask you to fill out the whole document, just make sure you can get into it by a certain date, would everybody feel that was reasonable?
My passwords.
Exactly, exactly my point. So the due date would be get passwords by June 1st. Okay. Well, that is, that is what will probably likely be in the email that comes with the cover letter for the. Are there any other, is there any other feedback from those of you who did evaluations in the past that, issues that were frustrating or that may have, you know, created a situation where you didn't have time or inclination to fill, to fill out the evaluation? Okay.
I think it's, we've improved the process each time.
Every year it changes, yeah, so.
And it's like, you know, I think having things right there, like the supporting documentation for superintendent's goals and, you know, to evaluate it, having it right there, to be able to reference it in any write-up that you do is huge help instead of, you know, so I think we've gotten a lot, a lot better. But yeah, I think that's, the getting in is the one that everyone gets a little nervous about, like, ugh. The password, do we get to do our own password?
No, but I'll let TJ know, there'll be some calls and he.
I didn't know if. You know, you know how you get temporary passwords and then you get to set your own?
He resets them all and then.
Just have TJ's contact information.
In the letter.
Yes, yes, that would be good. Because I am able to open up a lot of stuff, automatically opens in Google Docs, so I don't know if that would happen again, so.
Can be an adventure.
Yes.
Okay, any other?
Audience sharing or questions for Catherine?
Okay, the next is distribution of personnel report.
In your packet.
That's in the packet. Communications are at this time, approval of bills and pillows, that has folders for us to sign, I'm sure. Attend items for next month, we have district treasurer's report, the appointment, student handbook, as we talked about, school improvement, cafeteria.
Cafeteria discussion of pricing.
The school improvement plan will be in September. To allow our new principal to have a full year experience all the way through graduation and some time over the summer to work with her leadership teams.
Superintendent's final report and evaluation.
At the combined.
Oh, it's at combined, okay.
Before region.
They need to be combined before region.
I did speak with the booster, Tom Spataro, who's working with Jim Forbush. We had a great, about three-hour meeting the other day, and did ask that the boosters present a total donation amount so that we can vote and accept. We did talk about that in September, that this is a practice that we wanted to make sure that we adhere to each year. Also suggested that they may want to send a representative to talk about some of the things that we talked about, which was really, how can we continue to have an ongoing conversation about our fields and work in partnership to, to move that along? Very, they were very excited. And also, Mr. Witten will be once again departing from the regional school district. So I've reached out and suggested that he might want to do a final presentation to the committee, and did not make this packet, but as you know, there was an announcement that Michael Masarino has been appointed athletic director. I would also like Mike to also attend. So both folks will be at next month's meeting. I'm also mindful that when we have a combined meeting, the lights go out at 11:00. So trying to keep the combined, all of our discussions with the chairs with that in mind.
Okay, so do I have motion?
I move away adjourned, I need to meet the North Borough-South Borough Regional School Committee.
Oh, yes!
I'll put Kathleen on the record. Kathleen Howland on the record, so.
In the group.
By Paul Bakka, seconded by Kathleen Howland.
And I have the letter.